Ways to buy supplies, more efficient ways to operate, not filling positions in the street, wastewater and water departments when people would leave, no routine raises for management, we hired a new finance director at a lower salary than the previous one, we didn't fill the planning director position for five years even though the charter requires we have a planning director, and instead the service director, the city manager took turns filling in for that position. When we did finally hire a planning director, he began as an intern so that I could pay him $10 an hour and save the city some more money for a while. Current service director is making the same salary as the service director did in 2001. That's been 14 years. As the city manager, I am doing my previous job, executive assistant, in addition to the city manager's position, and I'm saving the city almost $48,000 a year by doing that over what the city manager made before. So, we are serious about the cuts, and we have been working on doing the cuts. Just this year alone, 2014, sorry, last year, we spent less than $102,000 less than was appropriated in the budget at the beginning of 2014. So, we did start the cuts long before this last couple of months. Howie had just one or two things he wanted to bring up as well.
Thank you, and these items are, since I've worked in the field here with the city, I started in 2000, and I knew the peace department, I'm just going to give a quick, brief description, the water department, it is an enterprise fund. They are supposed to be self-sufficient with their own user fees. They're required by the EPA to have working capital and be self-supported at all times. The EPA recommended that, it is four for that art facility, and that's happened, we reduced to three, and in 2004 after retirement, so we maintained this three. Anytime we have a sanitary survey, we get a hit on the report from the Ohio EPA rep. That department has two vehicles that are 2,000 or older, and just this year, we had to just replace the dump body on that vehicle to save money. There was some questions on how's your crew look when you're out there, but I wanted to pass on that. Our water main brakes are repaired with a four-man crew for safety and manpower. Fourth person usually pulled from the street crew. Main brakes are performed live and under high pressure, so it ain't given time if someone drives by, it may look like someone's holding a shovel, but we have people there for safety reasons. And then typically a residential service file will perform normally with three personnel. So, I think that was just kind of a brief on water. Wastewater department, same thing, enterprise fund, and it's based on our ordinance required by EPA to have working capital and be self-supporting. Those are based on user fees only and to not be supported by tax dollars. The EPA approved the operation manual, required six personnel to operate that facility. That setting was then reduced to five when some automation and the eighties and early nineties was implemented, reducing it to five, and currently, since 2005 after retirement, or a individual leaving, we've been operating with a staff of four. With that four, we have taken major hits from the EPA, has written us up in that department and give us violations for monthly or court maintenance in that facility. 2014 required plant repair funds, as our finance director had to move approximately $120,000 of our capital fund, which has been paid in there for years and years for future replacement of equipment, we had to pull that money out of there and put it into the operating fund, just to keep it in the black. Public works, cemetery is an enterprise fund, which should be self-supporting. In 2001, we had five full-time, plus a mechanic and plus two seasonal, that did the cemetery, parks, streets, and building maintenance. From 2002 to present, we've had three full-time, a mechanic, and two seasonal. Cemetery operated by, the cemetery currently is operated by one full-time and one seasonal employee. Community service and fire workers from the Clark County Sheriff's Office, which we do thank you for that, to help us weed during the holidays, especially on the day, things like that. Streets and parks and building maintenance performed by two full-time and one seasonal. We have one full-time mechanic to repair all the equipment and assist other public works departments, such as backhoe operations with water, or do backhoe and other help out at the wastewater department. Major cost savings approached happened in 2003 with a city purchase, they used Ohio's bucket truck for $7,000 to perform our home tree work and maintenance of street signals. Before, we used to have to contract out to our local tree companies, and a normal tree will run anywhere between $6 and $1,000 to cut down and remove rust. The savings is enormous considering we have approximately 40 ash trees to remove due to the annual ash war, and that's just this year alone. And so, you figure anywhere from 500 to 1,000 times 40, just in this one year, it's huge when our own crews can do it. The newest vehicle in those departments is in 2001 also, which currently needs, it's our big medium-duty dump, it's got holes in the body, it's rusted, only the cab looks nice, pretty blue, but the dump body looks more brown now because of the rust. So, that was just kind of an update of where we were with crews, how we shared resources to help each other out. That is all I have.
Thank you both. I was ready, miss. Welcome, Sheriff Kelly and Chief Deputy. Thank you for being here tonight, taking time out of your busy schedules to give us some information, I certainly appreciate it. Do you want to go right away?
Right, I think we wanted to keep our discussions to the cuts that could be made in the general fund, since that is the fund that is hurting, and I think we could start with the sheriff's office, the deputies, and that way if we get finished, they don't need to stay for the rest of the work session. I think maybe if we just start out with each council member saying what they think as far as cuts for that. Ethan, do you want to start and just go down the line and see?
Should we do council members, or let the sheriff get us the information that he asked?
That would be fine.
If I can get it right away, and Chief?
Well, thank you all. You know, I'm usually out here at this point, so every week, and have dinner here in New Carlisle. My Chief Deputy, if you haven't met Doyle Wright, he also lives, he actually lives in Mad River Township, his wife teaches for the Tecumseh district, so we're pretty well entrenched in the western Clark County, and love this community. The contract with the sheriff's office has been in existence for over 34 years. The first time it was enacted, it was the first one in the United States, and it was a model, and Canal Winchester and other communities across the United States have actually asked us for copies of our contract. At one time, if you remember, we had a sergeant butch crowd, we had a corporal on each shift, second and third, and we actually had 10 deputies assigned here to the city of New Carlisle, and it was just a great assignment here. Through the course of the last decade, when you lost your half percent, we have continued to decrease the number of deputies assigned out here, and this last three years, I think it's been four deputies. And you asked us to give you a one-month extension of the current contract, and we did that. One of the deputies assigned out here kind of saw that there's going to be some kind of cuts, and he applied for position, and he still lives here in the city, but he's working in Morefield Township. They passed a one mil, five-year levy, and so he's been assigned to that. So, we talked, the city manager and I, and our legal advisors said that we actually needed to have an addendum, and what we've decided, if it's your pleasure, would be at least through the month of January, we cut the cost by one-fourth, taking it from $28,000 a month to $21,000, paying for three deputies instead of four. That would save you some money right there. It's actually $7,248.03, that would be cut. What you have in front of you is the total reports, arrests, and calls that were taken only by those four deputies, just those four deputies, and that's for 2014. I listen, and the Chief Deputy listens to the radio constantly, I have a portable in my bag that I carry with me, and over the weekend, actually yesterday afternoon, I heard several calls come in on Hamilton. So, I asked our IT person to give me all the calls, our deputy leading, worked seven to three on Friday, and when he got off at three, no one was on duty except county deputies. So, I had him go through all the calls from 3:00 Friday until 7:00 this morning. There were 16 calls that actually needed a deputy to respond to. Out of those 16 calls, 10 of them were taken by county deputies, general fund, county deputies, so 62.5% of the calls in the city were taken by not deputies under contract. And they ranged from thefts, there were car break-ins over on Hamilton, vandalism, there were arrests up here at the Speedway, warrant service, I have a whole list of calls, but that's what happens on a regular basis. Every week, there are periods when there are no contract deputies on duty. The contract that we currently have calls for, if a deputy is off longer than two weeks, we have to replace him. This past year, we had two of the four off for months, and it actually cost the taxpayers of Clark County thousands of dollars to supplement the contract here in New Carlisle. So, as we go forward in 2015, I don't know what you're going, I know the decisions are tough, we've had to make tough decisions. One of the things I would suggest is that the police administrator position. I believe that your charter could make your city manager the safety director, and to compile this data, I've actually hired a Wittenberg senior student who's my research and analysis, and she only works 20 hours a week, but I believe she could collect this data and email it to you, so that you wouldn't actually have to have a sergeant, and he gets two hours of overtime for being here, that would save you, I don't know, at least some money right there, you could cut that position. We're willing to work with you, but if you decide to go to two deputies, or I see Nancy Brown is here, if we could talk about sharing the cost two and a half, if there are times when there is not a deputy on duty in the city of New Carlisle, as the sheriff, I'm charged with keeping the peace, nobody's defined that yet, but if there's an emergency, I can tell you, we will be here. If there's a break-in at a house, they're robbing Speedway, we will be here in full force. But if it's a simple, "They threw my trash cans over the fence, they broke into my car sometime over the weekend," that there'll have to be a delay, there has to be some cut in service. The problem is that these people over the weekend, when no deputy was on duty, all they see is a black car with a star, they don't know if it's got a New Carlisle on the fender or not, the deputies are all dressed alike, and so they don't know that they're not getting the additional service, and the taxpayers of Clark County are supplementing the city. If it's an emergency, we'll be here, but if it's a non-emergency situation, they'll have to wait, and when the deputy comes on duty, they'll have to take the reports. I mean, it's just, we cannot, I can't continue to spend 62% of the, or answer the calls, and I would say that that's a routine, that's average, when you look back across the whole year, and especially when there's vacations, sick, all of that, there's a whole lot of time when there's not a contract deputy here, but there is service provided. Last year, we all were upset about the school situation, and the council's decision was that they thought that a deputy should be here at seven to three to be there for the schools. In the research, we're not getting calls. We, the county, provides the DARE program for New Carlisle Elementary, Josh Burner's the DARE officer, he's there, I think, two and a half days when he's doing the DARE, I think they're seven classes of DARE students, I mean, it's a big school, and he's in the building when school opens, and he's there all day, he's there, there are cars around, and I truly would like to explore the possibility of sharing a deputy with Beaufort Township, they could go back and forth between calls, but if you go to two deputies, I really think that if we overlap the shifts and had them work 8:00 AM until 4:00 PM, and 4:00 PM until midnight, our other shifts are seven to three and three to 11, there'd be an hour overlap, and I honestly, when I was coming into town, you have a downtown, you got two brand-new drugstores right on the corner, we both came in Jefferson, and on Saturdays, it is busy, and I really think that you should have a deputy on duty on Saturday, and then they would be off, they'd work eight to four, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, take Thursday, Friday off or whatever, but, you know, we want to have this downtown boot, we want to see more businesses move in, and safety and security is an issue. And if, like now, our deputy who's assigned down here works seven to three, Monday through Friday, Saturday and Sunday, he's not, there's no one. Now, I did have a second deputy who worked noon until eight, but he's gone, so that's my suggestion, if you want the deputy seven to three, Monday through Friday, but I'm looking at the most coverage you can get for your dollars. So, the cost is, we are human, it is a fixed cost, we've adjusted it, we used to charge years ago, I think it was a 5% administration fee for my time and all the other time, we don't do that anymore, we charge exactly for the cost of the deputy's insurance, some are family, some are single, we've cut everywhere we can cut, we support you everywhere we can, but there's a breaking point for us as well. So, any questions, or whatever your pleasure is, yes, sir?
Yes, sir. Yes, I don't know what's going to happen in the world, if New Carlisle was to cut back to two deputies, would we still get the same service as far as the detectives, the crime lab, the truck, and all that? That would not change one bit.
I am the sheriff of Clark County, and when we had these robberies in 2014, we had three of them, you had detectives, you had the crime van out here, we had command staff out here, we made arrests, all of that, it's the minor, the dogs barking, the car parked out here, you know, that's been sitting there for three weeks.
As the current crimes.
Yeah, the in-progress, the violent crimes, you know, if it's domestic out here, now, when there are deputies not on duty, we always send the cars, but you're going to get, when it's an emergency, you're going to get everything.
Okay, but I just want to make sure both were.
Never change.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. Thoughts on anyone else? John, let's go.
You know, I like the idea of sharing, you know, with Beaufort. The only thing I don't understand, and I know this has to be worked out, you know, is, you know, who's going to do the maintenance on the cars, who's going to, the time, you know, from one place to another, those are the particulars, you know, and I'm sure that has to be done by legal, you know, Nancy's group and our group, you know, and I know that has to be done, okay? And I'd like to, you know, my idea is three deputies, but, you know, I have a question here, if we only have one deputy, who does the backup?
The car from the, you know, even now, there's only one deputy on duty, and we always have a car.
From this district.
In this district, because, you know, Beaufort Township has 20,000 people, and we always have a car out here, we do a lot of traffic grant and work the 235 corridor, you know, last night, we had a serious crash at Girrald 235, there's always a car out here, but when Dale Stahl, you know, got in a fight over here, and a neighbor came to help him, his nearest car was the district car, and he got here as quickly as possible, but that's how it is now. You know, there's only been, and we don't have it now, but there was a time when we had two deputies overlapping, we had seven to three, and eight to four, and eight to, or noon to eight, and then Beller comes on at 8:00 at night, but.
Okay, you talked about the sergeant, okay, you talked about the sergeant and how that could, you know, we could cut that out, and save X amount of millions of dollars. So, anyway, is that possible, is that what Sergeant Underwood does, just collects statistics? I thought that you had to have so many, a supervisor with so many.
You know, if you go down, he's got four people now, and basically, all he's doing is, he's your kind of mediator.
He's our mediator, yeah.
And honestly, Kim and I talk by email every day if we need to, if there's an issue, and if I get a call of a complaint in the city of New Carlisle, I email it to the deputy who's working, or I call dispatch and have them go on it right away. And I'm not trying to, you know, there's a, he could work a ton of overtime in other areas, but as far as the stats and the data, you know, and if you need a uniform deputy at your council meeting, you could arrange to have your deputy that's working, so it wouldn't cost you overtime. If you're trying to cut every cost you can, I'm just trying to help you out.
And they would probably be better suited to come anyways, because they're here and they know what's going on in the community. Sergeant Randall Woods, he comes to the meeting, you know, your council meetings is all he attends, and does the statistics. He has an understanding of what's going on in New Carlisle, but he's not here taking the calls, those deputies are, they would know exactly what this community's about.
Are you finished, Joe?
Yeah.
Two questions. One is, you know, I don't know how I feel about sharing the deputy, I'm not saying I'm against it or for it, I just don't know enough about the logistics of how it works. So, one, I'd like to hear the pros, but I think the pros would be, obviously, it's going to be a nice savings for us, but with anything, there's got to be some cons involved, so I'd like to know that, but also, on a separate subject, could you explain, and you would explain probably better than anybody in this room, we've had a lot of people in the town ask why we don't have our own sheriff's department, I mean, we all pretty much know that, you know, we get this huge burger package contracted with the sheriff's department, can you just explain what all comes, you know?
You know, a deputy, let's say, costs $100,000 with all the fringe benefits and everything, so if you cut two, you're down to $200,000. If you're going to have your own chief, you're going to have to write your own policies, procedures, you're going to have to be responsible for all of your own training, you know, the state of Ohio says every police officer has to have so many hours of training, firearms, everything that goes with it, and we make sure that that's done, all these people out here are trained, they're certified. Beller is now nationally recognized in drug interdiction and alcohol apprehensions, and so if you have your own chief, you're going to have to have your own policies and procedures, you're going to probably, you know, have high turnover, because you look at smaller agencies, that's where I hire them from. The last two I hired, they were from other agencies, they spend about two or three years there, and then they want to go to the sheriff's office, and so you'd be facing that, and then you get into, to try and balance your budget, if you're going to have 24-hour, you're going to have part-time and volunteer officers, and, you know, it's hard enough with, we have 20 command officers trying to keep track of our folks, and computers watching their every move and everything, and we still have issues. So, you know, that's your decision, if, you know, German Township, you know, they've got their own Enon, South Charleston, but in, I'm just telling you the truth, German Township at 11:00, you turn the lights out and go home. And the sheriff's office, we handle the calls there. If there's a call in Enon, and they need assistance, we send a car, South Charleston, we send a car. The state patrol, you know, the state patrol at night, they only have one trooper for 400 square miles, and we're their only backup as well. I mean, we're spread thin, we do the, I think, a great job, and we got the dad to prove it, but your decision.
I think a lot of people still rely on some of the perks that we give the county, like you said, you know, the detectives and the dogs, and whatever it is that we need to get taken care of.
Well, just look at the heritage of flight, I think we had 19 people working down here, directing traffic, extra duty, you know, again, a visible presence, safety and security, that's why, it was a great time, people, it could have been a little warmer, you know, but.
Are you finished, sir?
Yes, sir.
I just want to thank you for coming out. I have two questions, and I don't mean, if it sounds critical of your department, I don't mean it to be that way. First, the first question I have is, if a deputy were to be split, do we have a mechanism in place to ensure that 50% of the time is being spent here as well as the township? Because something I'm concerned with, and I don't think it would be an issue, but just to say, if there's a lot of issues in a different part of the township, the deputy could maybe spend more time there and neglect the other half of it, just wondering if there is a mechanism in place to make sure that we're having it even split. And then the second question I had, and it's more of an intangible, I'm not sure if anyone can really answer it, it's sort of philosophical, but anytime you have fewer people, naturally, you're going to be able to cover less. And I know we've got people coming in from Dayton, from Cincinnati, for drugs, and you're, and the sheriff's department has done an amazing job, and I would thank you for the work you've done in stopping the prescription drugs and the heroin traffic, the car break-ins, which I think are probably also connected to people trying to get money for drugs, and I'm worried that with fewer, if we were to cut down on the number of officers we have, it would cut back on the prevention for crime. I think people would say, okay, we know there's no deputy here, yes, there, if there was an emergency, we could have someone come in, but hey, it's sort of fair game in New Carlisle between these hours and this day, and I was wondering, I know it may be difficult to answer, but is that an issue that you have seen these situations? So, the first question I had was making sure that, having some way to check for time, and the second one is, have you found that fewer coverage, less coverage brings in more crime?
Well, I'm glad that Nancy's here, and we have a great relationship with Beaufort Township, but, you know, we're exploring new territory of splitting the cost, but, you know, our educational service officers, they're not assigned strictly to Tecumseh, they go to Tecumseh, they go to Northwestern, they go to Green, we split the county in half, and if we have a situation at Tecumseh, that deputy will spend the day there, but they try and make up for it then by spending more time at Northwestern and Green, and if, we have talked, you know, we have a great deputy assigned to Beaufort Township, he's at Tecumseh Grand, he grew up, he loves this area, and he's wanted to work with Deputy Beller, he's very good at traffic, and this 235 is a corridor of drug trafficking, but if there's a situation in Beaufort where they're going to spend maybe all eight hours working on a crime there, but, you know, the same people that commit crimes in New Carlisle are breaking in or doing things over in Park Lane, we are all one, it's one school district, you know, that's one issue, and I don't know, we'd have to work that out. The second is, another bang for your buck, Detective Ron Fader, who was a deputy here, is still, I have second shift detectives, and he is coming out to New Carlisle here, and he's running the crime watch meetings, and through crime watch, if we get people to lock their cars every time, lock their doors every time, if they report people walking down the middle of the street at 3:00 in the morning, those are things that we can do to prevent crime, and that's going to continue, I want Ron, he likes crime watches, he enjoys getting out and talking to people, and you know, he has a lot of connections here in New Carlisle. I think they meet right here, don't they, the crime watcher? That's going to continue, but, you know, our news media's here, and if they put out a headline that in New Carlisle, it's open season, nobody's, that's not true. Fewer deputies, yes, there's going to be less of a presence, but God is my witness, if there's a major crime, we're going to be here, we're not going to let any part of this community. I can take you back to 1993, we laid off deputies, there were nights when it was me out here, and I had a news reporter, Russ Wilson, and we had a call in South Charleston, and our next call was here, and it was 35 miles, you know, and we made it through that, we will make it through this, we will work with you, I understand budgets, but the people in this community have to make a decision, if they want additional law enforcement presence... want additional law enforcement presence. That's what, you know, Morefield Township just passed a one mil levy because they understood the need for additional protection. And Bethel Township basically just passed their renewal for five years, I believe. Um, and I think, you know, as government is asked to do more with less, I think we need progressive thinking and merging and if we can work it out, I'm all for it.
Thank you. Are you finished?
I am, thank you.
If you'd like, go ahead.
I'm with Bill, thanks for coming out. All right. We appreciate having done business with you for all those years and we're glad you wanna still do it. I would like you to verify or clear up a point or two made in the Saturday, January third, Springfield News Sun. This is regarding your Morefield Township contract. And I'll read from the paper. Morefield Township voters have rejected a safety levy three times previous to the latest levies passing, according to the Board of Elections. Now, the part that, about you, the two deputies will work only within township limits and will be assigned by a sheriff deputy that patrols a large district that includes the township. The big thing is, I know that the deputies in New Carlyle, from time to time, leave New Carlyle. They work New Carlyle primarily and Old Bethel Township also.
If there's an emergency.
Uh, is it done the same way in Morefield Township or are they hung there and act as if there's an emergency?
We just, we said the same thing to the township trustees. If there is a situation, let's say at, uh, uh, there, there's a robbery at the Upper Valley Mall or an officer needs assistance and they're the only car and they, they can go, they will go, they will do what they need as quickly as possible and get back to the township and the area car or somebody else will take the report and they're not gonna be tied up there for, you know, long period of time. But, you know, when there's a call here and, uh, if there's, the only deputy available to go back up a deputy down here at two thirty-five in Garlo is right here, then that deputy goes down, but then they come right back and it's the same thing. If the deputy in Bethel Township is the only one available to come in here and back up the deputy here, maybe at the traffic stop or whatever. Um, but when Morefield Township, they originally proposed having their own police department and it was rejected by the voters. This past vote was signed by the three township trustees and the letter that they sent out said that they were going to contract with the sheriff's office and I signed that letter and it was sent to every household in Morefield Township. That was, as I understand it, one of the reasons it was rejected is because they were gonna start their own police department.
One further question.
Yes, sir.
An officer needs assistance. Could you just, 'cause there's more than just us listening here. Could you give us two or three usual examples of what that would be?
Deputy assigned here to, uh, the city of New Carlyle and he is out, I think it was eleven thirty, I'm talking about Deputy Stahl, and, uh, he went to talk to this gentleman and we'd had previous calls on this man and this man struck him and they're fighting before Deputy Stahl even knew anything and he's trying to call for help and the nearest car was the area car, but a citizen came out and helped. People don't know what they don't know. Every single day deputies get assaulted, deputies are in violent confrontations, uh, we have deputies bit, spit on, uh, fighting, just coming out here tonight, just now. Two deputies are going to one call, suspected drugs, they're going to do a welfare check on the mother, the father's calling in 'cause he suspects the mother's on drugs. And it's six o'clock on a Monday night, um, Thursday night is the most violent day of the week for law enforcement. More police officers are killed on Thursdays than any other day of the week. Our busiest time starts at eleven AM and it goes until seven PM. And that's why, when I've done studies, I did one out here and I wanted to change those hours ten to six. In the city of New Carlyle, it's a, it's a bedroom community and most people are sleeping. They don't call us until about ten o'clock in the morning. Uh, our call volume, and I've got it with me here as well, it's way down till about ten. People get up, start moving, um, but that's the reality. Thank you, yes, sir.
Are you finished, Mr. Wells?
My first question is, it was about the, uh, sergeant. So, would Sergeant Underwood be going to a different department or?
He, his job is keeping the stats. He gets the daily reports of the, the deputies and basically he just adds these numbers and puts them on a spreadsheet and, you know, he brings out these reports you get every month and.
We have other functions at the sheriff's office besides.
I was making sure, like, he wouldn't like, if we.
No, no, he's in charge of the USO's. He's assigned to the East District Office and comes out here and he's paid two hours of overtime for every, and I'm, I'm saying, we could save you that by having these numbers calculated by another person. I've hired a Wittenberg student and, you know, this isn't rocket science, putting this down.
All right, and my next question, do you know what percent of the time the township deputies come to New Carlyle?
I do not.
All right. Uh, Ms. Brown, do you, by any chance?
I, I don't know what the percentage is. I, you know, I definitely said it's commonly since, uh, two hours a day up here, it's been days where we spend social time.
All right, that was. And then, I'm all for a proponent of the joint deputy. I think that's a wonderful idea. Nancy and I talked about it and then you'd gotten involved, so thank you for coming, by the way, so. And I know we can't really discuss it much because we don't have attorneys here, got pass out of contract and everything.
We'd have to discuss, you know, what car they would use and, and all that sort of thing, but, you know, a couple of years ago, there was a whole group of folks from Clark County that went to Louisville and, and Indianapolis and talked about metropolitan government, you know, and I'm not suggesting that, but we've gotta look at ways that instead of everybody having their own, maybe sharing resources. In Clark County, we only had one record section. We shared with the city of Springfield. We have one indoor range, one training room, one crime lab. We're still talking about maybe in my lifetime, having one dispatch center instead of having two. You know, it just makes sense to share resources and, and, uh, so if we can work this out with Bethel, you know, I think it could, it could work and be a, a template for other communities.
Anything else?
That's it.
Yes, just, once again, I don't know if I missed it or not, but what was, what are the, there has to be cons with this and I'm not saying, I'm trying to find them, I'm just, but there, there's always a negative side to it.
To a shared person?
To a share. What could, what could be some of the negatives?
That the person who's assigned here, uh, Howard says, I want you to go out and, and check on this and this and this because they're stealing water or something and, and the trustees in Bethel say, no, I want them to do this and this and this because we got an issue over here with, uh, you know, in Bethel, the deputy enforces their ordinances on weeds and junk and vacant properties and all sorts of things and, so, you know, it just.
It could be a ton of war.
Yeah, but, you know.
In an ideal world, you would see them fifty percent of that shift that they're working here and fifty percent of the township, but if something, let's say something occurred in the city of New Carlyle that was really demanding and they had to be here the whole shift, the township then suffers or vice versa if they had to be there. So, I mean, it's, it's gonna be a give and take, uh, you know, and we don't know from day to day when we come to work what that day has in store for us. That's, each day is a, is a different day and law enforcement is, is a new day every day you walk in the door. So, that's, that's what you're facing and that's probably the biggest negative you're gonna find in it. But I think the positives will probably outweigh the negatives.
When they robbed the bank downtown here two years ago, it was a hundred degrees, you know, the Bethel deputy came in and stayed as long as needed to try and locate that person. The same thing when they robbed the Medway Bank, you know, the deputies here moved that way, you know, we were hoping to catch them, a car moving or something. When we had a missing child here on Lake Avenue, uh, I don't know, four months ago, we brought everybody in, you know, and fortunately the child was like three doors away, but, you know, there has to be give and take. I think, and I don't know this to be true, but I think over Clayton in Montgomery County that they have a, a shared township or.
Clayton, Ankerwood, you mean?
Yeah, in that area, something like that.
Yeah, Clayton, Union and Ankerwood, they're all.
They should, they got fire departments and everything, they kinda share that and, um, and here in, in Clark County years ago, the, the South Vienna talked with Harmony Township about letting South Carolina officers go out into the township and, you know, they were more interested in seeing how many citations they could write. I think that was a short-lived, uh, proposition there, but I really think with our long-term relationship with Bethel, with New Carlyle, with all the people in this room, that we could make it work.
May I say something? Then we'll get to us.
Absolutely.
I've not had a chance yet. Right now, we have three deputies actually, because one has left us, which he was trying to preserve his job at the point to go to Morefield. So, we're actually out of three and you just said we're actually cutting monthly expenses down seven thousand dollars.
We've proposed that, and that's something to, Kim, I think you have to vote on it at the next council.
Yeah, I'll be bringing another ordinance.
When will the new contract for us be available at this point?
Well, we're in contract negotiations with our deputies right now. Um, but this contract runs through the thirty-first. I don't think we're gonna have a new contract by the thirty-first, but we could, uh, you know, they're not gonna get a giant raise.
So, we may have to go and extend it in, is that what you're hoping?
Correct. You know, and our current contract, if you cut a deputy, the deputies here, they don't get laid off, they bump, they go to the vacancy wherever it is and the vacancy happens to be in the jail. And so, Major Sack took the opportunity to stay out on the street and he chose to transfer to Morefield Township.
As far as sharing a deputy, I've thought about that and I've talked, you know, about that. The legality of it, I mean, that can be overcome, is that correct, as far as the legality of being able to, to know? And I, and I understand exactly what you're saying about fifty percent, fifty percent, it may be.
Sixty, forty-one to eighty.
Exactly, it could be switching, which is actually happening right now anyway. The same thing is happening, just like you said, a deputy from Park Lane may have to come up here and respond and they have to help out when you have a deputy or vice versa. I live on Main Street and I see them zipping by both directions, you know, trying to help each other out. So, I think I would be, if I saw the legality of it and know exactly how we're going to structure it, that I would be for something like that also, instead of giving up another deputy total. And you mentioned that it would cost us close to a hundred thousand dollars per deputy is what we're paying. Well, I mean, it's a little less than I think.
It's less than they.
A little less. How much did you figure?
I just asked Mr. Jones for this, it was, uh, when, when Mr. Majerak left, it was, uh, he was family, so he, it was ninety-eight thousand something, eight hundred.
It's about close.
Ninety-two.
Ninety-two? Okay, thank you.
Insurance is a big factor.
Right, exactly. And we're having breakdown of all that and we understand that. So, those are the questions I have and I would be, I would definitely like to see if that something could be projected as far as a deputy sharing a deputy.
I'm sorry, Matt, you would like to speak again, sir?
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanna clarify something. Uh, the question was answered, asking and answering about deputies from there coming here. It made it sound like we're getting all the help. I would disagree with that. I think if you looked at it hour per hour, we probably said more your way than it's this way. And, and I don't know, it might be fifty percent, you know, but let's not make it look one way.
Well, there's, there's been four up here and one down there, so it has to be.
Right, but it goes both ways. But my question is this, as far as sharing a deputy, um, you brought up a very good question, or a very good thing about how telling one thing to somebody else, so he's gonna have you as the boss, he's gonna have her as the boss, he's gonna have them as the boss. I think that is a major drawback. I, I think that could be a big recipe for disaster. But aren't we already doing that? It's not on paper, but we are with what she said, with what I just said, we are already sharing a deputy. If they need our deputy, he goes. If we need theirs, they go. So, why do we need to complicate up the paperwork and say fifty percent there, fifty percent here, fifty-two, forty-eight, whatever? Leave it be. You know, that, that reason is my sharing. You know, it's cost sharing.
Cost sharing is, if they're paying fifty percent, I don't work paying fifty percent, that's the cost sharing.
Yeah, we're lucky. That's what I was just saying.
Well, one of the things that I could see difficulty, and I think this is difficulty years ago, it was talked about, is that they have a levy where automatically comes out of general fund, you know, so that was, I think that was a point of contention at that time, so I think that's, that's a big problem.
They have a five-year renewal, I believe is what they have.
And more folks put out a one mil levy just for law enforcement and a contract with the deputies, uh, and it's gonna bring in, I think, two hundred and sixty-five thousand is what they've said.
Per year.
Per year.
And that's why our income tax increase would be solely for police coverage.
With protection.
And instead of it being a property tax, so it's an income tax.
So, we look at, Mr. Wells?
Uh, this is instructions for the C A manager. Uh, our bulletproof vests, we pay for them correctly?
No, the sheriff has started.
Because I remember we paid for them a long time.
That's recently.
Yeah.
Right. Because it used to be the American Legion donated money.
Yeah.
The sheriff ran down.
Yeah. The head of the league.
And we also, the county this year, you know, the attorney general said that you need this kind of computer and this system and the county IT decided that the county would pay for all new computers and, and all desktop computers, uh, so that they could be maintained by the county and so that there's no event of sabotage or break-in or anything like that. So, you know, those are the additional things, but with the vests, if, you know, Kim Major Sack goes, which he did in Morefield, his vest goes with it. And we put in, I think, thirteen thousand dollars this year, the best. They used to be about a hundred and twenty-five bucks and now they're five to six hundred bucks, dollars apiece.
Okay, counsel, have we, 'cause I'd like to turn it over to the public if they'd like to say something disappointing. Is anybody okay at the moment? It's nice to have you, Sheriff, if we, is there anybody out in the audience that would like to say anything about the police protection, if you would? Could you go up to the podium and identify yourself, please? And identify yourself at the podium, please.
How many, count, two, two, four, guys. Folks, I respect you for putting the badge on and I commend you guys for doing the job you do. What I'd like to know, how do you figure the breakdown per deputy, again, when you present it to the city?
I have a copy of the contract.
Money-wise?
Yeah, money-wise. I have a copy of the page from the contract if you'd like to see it. It has the breakdown with salaries, sick pay, Medicare, workers' comp, life insurance, if you would like to see that.
Sir, it depends on the deputy and how long they've been at the sheriff's office and what step they're in as far as that contract goes.
Where, the deputies are union and they're negotiating a new contract right now and, uh, you know, they have an hourly rate, they have set, uh, contract obligations to go to court, they get two hours minimum overtime. Uh, the big factor, Medicare, health insurance, uniform allowance, they get nine hundred dollars a year for uniform allowance. Uh, it's not just us making these figures up, these are the exact amounts. And like I said, we used to charge a five percent administrative fee for my time, my chief deputy and everybody else, we don't do that. These are bare booms of dollars.
What it cost us, we pass on to the city.
Oh, yeah, I understand that. Now, is it required by this evening to have a vehicle drive back forth from homes?
It is not.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Again, we're still in police at this point, if you would. Police, anyone else? Staff, anyone? Anything you'd like to say at this point?
Um, I did have a question regarding vehicles. You and I had talked about this before. Um, it had been suggested that it might be better for either the city or for your department if you took over all the vehicles. We'd have that discussion, but.
We'd have that discussion, but it didn't sound like it was going to be advantageous to your department whatsoever.
No, you know, a new vehicle, to equip it and everything, I would say is $40,000. At least $35,000. And we buy under state bid, we have our own mechanics at the county garage, but we still take them down to P and R Communications to do the install, and we're taking them to Huber Heights to do the setup, is that what we're doing now?
Yeah, we're talking about taking them to Huber Heights.
Huber Heights. But, you know, these vehicles, you're fortunate. You know, Levy lives in the city, Beller lives just north of town, and Dale Stahl lives just a mile north. You know, they're not traveling 20 miles back and forth, and it's not in the contract that they have to drive a car home. If they have that car assigned to them, it's proven, they get more miles, they take better care. We only look at one driver. If they're burning up brakes or tires, we know who's responsible. And it saves... The other thing, we used to buy cars every year, and now we have deputies, and they're going to be in that same car at least five to six years. These Crown Vics, we were getting $200,000 on them. The Dodge Chargers just aren't holding up. But for us to take over your cars is not really cost-effective. One is a 98. I understand the Jeep's still in the garage.
You know, our Chargers are 2007, and their opposite problem with them is they don't get the mileage, so they get some sitting in idle time, which is sometimes worse than the highway driving.
Anybody have any more questions for Sheriff and Chief Deputy? Anybody at all? Council, anyone?
I will meet with township trustees, city manager, you know, my chief deputy and I. We'll make ourselves available whenever to talk about trying to resolve some issues and put our best foot forward.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me tonight. Any questions?
Thank you.
In progress.
Will you have an email? I think all of you, if not Kim does, and she can email me 24 hours a day. And what else is there?
Thanks for all the support from the community, we appreciate it.
So we're going back to talking about the cuts. I'd like to ask council to remember that we did put this on the ballot in November. And in my opinion, it may not be your opinion, but in my opinion, by them voting no, when they knew it was for police expenses, they are saying they don't want to spend the money for the police coverage. So if we're going to make cuts, to me, it's whether telling us to make them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I say something?
Sheriff, yeah?
And I agree partly with that, and also what I think they're saying, you know, they're saying is we need to get a little bit more creative in, you know, what we're doing. You know, I'm going to say this anyway. I'm going to be like you, Rick, I'm just going to say it anyway.
Please.
Okay. That...
John, could you speak up a little bit?
There are some people that don't trust us still, you know, and we have, you know, we have to earn their trust even more. I've been here almost 10 years, and I keep hearing the same thing, oh, Tanger. You know, like you said before, it's the previous administration, but they kind of relayed it back to us. So we have to kind of, you know, try to earn it, no matter how much it slapped us in the face. You know, and I just think, yeah, I bet you do. I was out there, now, poor myself, she was getting bullied by somebody, and she didn't need to get... I'd like to take these slap things. But anyway, as far as, you know, I am really in favor of talking to Nancy, you know, and her group out there, and see how we can work this out, you know, and I hope the sheriff does come back and, you know, and we can talk it all out. You know, I like the idea of three deputies now. I'm ready to compromise with the three. Two, a little bit hesitant, you know, but I, remember, I'm the guy who had the house broken into, and within 15 minutes, I had six deputies in my living room. Where the six deputies come out of two, I have no idea.
I have the same scenario, John, by the way. Mine was kicked in, my back door, and some guns were stolen. I call, and they have what they call a revolver, and he looks like a SWAT guy, and he was there before I brought him, he was at that point, so the service is there, there's no doubt about it. And I think you do an excellent job. I just wish we could afford to keep on the four or five, even if we were to pass the code of a revolver, the symptom tax, it would be a hundred and fifty minutes. We'll just have to see what happens again, but we still need to make the cuts to keep our budget in, we need to make cuts of... I brought the figure of what, $150,000 is what you're looking at, that you would like to be at least by now?
I think we're looking at more than $250,000 to $300,000 at least.
$300,000?
$250,000 to $300,000 to be comfortable, to be able to have some money in there. I mean, the way it is right now, if there is one thing, one piece of equipment, one well that goes down, we are out of luck. And that's not the way to run a city.
No, it's not.
It's just, you know, we've been talking about this since we did the street level. We've been talking about, we projected it out, and we could see that this was going to happen, that the money was gradually going down and gradually going down, and we, eventually you have to stop the hemorrhaging.
You want something?
Yeah, I got a lot. I think you may want to move me out. Everybody may want to move me out, I don't know. Especially you, Kim. This didn't just start yesterday, it didn't start last week. This didn't start last week, it didn't start last month, this started a long, long time ago. And I look right around the table and go from there to here, to you, to you and everybody, it's all of our faults, okay? All of ours. It should have never came to the point that we said, hey, we have to lay off two deputies. And sure, first came the point to say, well, then I have to lay off one, we're going to fix something here pretty damn soon, okay? That didn't happen. I know you and I disagree with this, but for five years, we dragged the $5,000 to $9,000 out the window on West Cat, okay?
What?
On West Cat. I said after the first year, Kim, that that's money going out the tailpipe. Last count, there's less than one person, less than two people per trip riding on that bus, okay? So we need to get rid of that. The pool...
That's $4,000 a year.
Well, but that's a start. You don't look at something and say, I'm only saving $4,000, because if you look at 10 $4,000 items, guess what? You got $40,000.
And defensive West Cat, if you let it go, we'll never have a bus out here again. It's been 40 years to get bus service out here. We have fought and fought and fought to get a grant and to have it out here. There are people that...
Kim, it's $4,000 a year, and I like what you just said, that there hasn't been a bus in 40 years. There's a reason there hasn't been one in 40 years, because it can't make any money. If that was your bus and you was paying for it, it would not be here. If it was my bus, it would have lasted the first year.
It takes longer than you start a new transit system.
Kim, bottom line, it's not making any money, we're spending money on it, and it's not doing anything, okay? Please don't take it personally, that's not what it...
I did take it personally, because I worked very hard to get that bus started.
I know you did. The whole city's worked hard for everything, but some things do not work, okay? And the bus is not working, it needs to go.
I don't think two years is a fair trial.
Yes, okay. We'll just have to dig around that, okay? Because I'm going to turn around and contradict myself, okay? And so I'm not picking on anyone, it's our loss, okay? I'm sitting here looking at Valerie about the pool, okay? And Valerie, I like the Joe, personally, based out here, and played by the ballgame because he threw the bat, and I won't forget that, but that's way back, you know, but I want to keep the pool. I would not vote to close it, though, when I see people sitting there saying, wait a minute, you're talking about a damn bus that only costs $2,000 a year, but it's got a pool that costs $4,000. Mr. Zambach, the mentor, so go back and spoke. We can't shut down everything. We have to keep something, because if we don't, we're leaving one in the car, okay? You know, so there's some things we're going to have to do. I'm with, I think it was Michael or whoever, John, said the people can't afford it, he said they don't want two deputies, they're perfectly willing to live with two. Guess what? That's what we're going to do. And that's what we should do, say, okay, we're going to have two deputies. I will tell you straight on, I'm dead set against sharing one, don't want to share one, he's going to have Jim Kelly for a bus, he's going to have you for a bus, he's going to have them for a bus, he's not going to know which way he's going, and it's going to be a constant problem. We've had that problem before with them, and we don't share a deputy with them. I hear deputies complaining, they're after bed, what have you sent me down here on? Something Mickey Mouse called, I shouldn't have made it, people up here, we need to do more, okay? So, but anyways, I don't know how much we can be cut, Kim. Okay, the trash and them, you know, there was open in the paper, they were calling people. We didn't call anybody. It's never been said that we were just going to get rid of trash and them. We wanted to know how much it cost. I know you threw out a figure one time for $20,000, and you said when you did that, you know, I don't know exactly what it was, we had to look at it, that was just a guess. So we didn't call anybody, no one at this table has ever said, we're going to get rid of trash and them. So we're going to look at it, we're going to see how much it costs, okay? So, but anyway, with everything said, I think we do cut the deputies back. Valerie, with what I said about the pool, I wasn't at the last meeting, but I understand you said there was changes that could be made to save money. They should have been done a long time ago, okay? It's, you don't close the building when the bus is gone, it's kind of late. Should have been fixed a long time ago, and please don't take that personally, you know? Because we're sitting here, and we should have been on top of it as well. We should have been on top of this five years ago, and so we shouldn't be here right now. When I say we're not talking about ours, not hers, not low, everybody's sitting here. We missed the boat, we didn't get on top of it, and we should have, okay? But now's the time to correct it. And I will say this openly, I never met you, sir, but I did talk to people after the meeting, and I'm...
Problem, I let him know first, he lets me, he lets whoever the deputy is on duty at that time know. If there's a heads up that, you know, I need to let him know that such and such is going on, can you let the deputies know? He is the person that does that, he doesn't get paid for that, he, you know, because he's got other duties with the county. So this $1,157, the sheriff is saying all he does is do a report. That's a lot more than that. I'm already the safety director per the charter, that is another one of my titles, and the police administrator, the fire chief hope work under me, so I don't really want to take on another duty either, as far as doing the report. Not that it would be maybe that time consuming.
All right, and then my second one is, on here in the, I was looking at this and this, I don't see our, what we would pay out for a law director in either one of these, in the 2014?
They're not an employee, they're a contractor?
They're a contractor.
Right, this is just employees who are employees of the city?
Okay, and do you know how much that would cost the city, a rough estimate? Because if that, I mean, if it's going to cost us money, I mean...
For a law director?
Yeah, for how much that typically costs us. It's not in here.
How much you use them, isn't it?
You know, based on how, I mean, we obviously have like a standard time, like an average time, so, I mean, I think that probably should, we should add that in here so we know what we'll be paying out with that as well.
Can I ask what you're looking at, so I know what form you're talking about?
The sheet you just gave today.
The sheets are in there, and then general fund, not broken out.
It's just part of the general?
Right, it's part of all the general fund.
And the budget was $34,000. The budget had $44,000.
That's probably on the low end, but yeah.
That does the number.
That was what was budgeted last year, right? Yeah, it'll, yeah.
I was just, I can't find it, I just wanted to check. That's it.
Also?
Yep.
Anyone else?
I'm sorry, I'm going to ask you out, I know everyone's trying to get out. If the pool is set, for example, for two, three years, if you decide to close it, if it was, what would it cost to get back up to par, start another one? Just a dollar.
I got those numbers, you were not at the work session, because I talked to Jason last time.
Oh, I imagine, we always start capital $5,000 here.
But I imagine they could say it's going to be a whole lot more.
You could double or triple it, just even when we blow out the lines, things just age. For instance, this year, our Virginia Graham Baker Act drains are up for replacement. We just, I just found this out today, so we're going to spend about $3,000 right now on top of the original capital we normally do every year, so that's coming no matter what, open, you know, as we have to put new drains in. What else did he get?
He just said that it will be the same repairs as we usually do, they'd just be a little bit more intense or severe if it was closed for a year, so instead of maybe $10,000, it would be maybe $18,000?
Well, that is very possible, and typically that's in pump and boiler, because each of those run around the $20,000 range in needing refreshable.
And granted, cost of vandalism, of course.
What's that?
Cost of vandalism also.
Oh, absolutely.
Be a wonderful thing if we could find somebody who would like to lease the pool and could make it into a moneymaker, but unfortunately, it doesn't seem like there is such a thing nowadays.
I think, as I said, in the beginning, background, because I've read articles and stuff about this whole contract thing, that is the reason that the gentleman gave it up in the first place, is he wasn't making any money, almost all private. I had a call from South Charleston a couple of years ago, said, hey, we're considering closing our pool, we don't know what to do. I said, we currently fund it with the general fund, you know, like you do? I said, yeah, I said, but that's not becoming feasible anymore. And he said, well, what's your rate? I said, what's our rates compared to Splash Young? Places like Splash Young and the aquatic center up here in Huber are not doing what I would call well, they're not profiting, being able to put money back for that future. They're in the same boat. As you know, their fees are higher. We, our rates are, when we, we worked on rates for probably two, three years, I mean, we go on this all the time, but how much can we do? What were the people willing to pay? And what can we do to bring them in, extra curricular activities inside? We tried this, all except for making people pay for their own equipment, for instance, their suits.
Light cars.
Yeah, light cars, light cars. You know, my managers are already, they're a little list of all pools, and they share. I have three managers, but that doesn't mean I have three on it one time, that just gives them a break. So, yeah, we're about as bare as it can be, it just, weather really only is the factor that brings the pool near the zero line. Other than that, we have looked at really trying to increase pool passes. Daily gate cells is really where you make your money. People come every day, but, you know, what can the community afford? Is where we really struggle with trying to make the pool passes affordable.
Thank you. Would you like to speak, uh?
I'm ready.
Would you go up to the podium, please?
I'm ready.
Identify yourself, please.
It's been a long day. My name is Val Hardman, and I have been at the pool since 2002. Since then, I'm not afraid to tell you, I started making $10. I now only make $11.25. So that tells you who I'm there for. I'm not there to become rich, the pool. I'm there for our community and for the kids. I have seen kids grow up at that pool, I have seen kids learn how to swim at that pool. I have had parents come back to tell me that my child saved mother child by reaching, instead of getting into the water, the lesson they learned at our pool. That's a service to our community. We have people, like I said before, not just coming from us, they're coming from Tip, Troy, Bellbrook, Fairborn, because we are one of the few public pools that are left. Some of the things that I have looked at my budget, and I will tell you, since Mr. Kitco brought me the budget, and Kelly Witt was with us three years ago, we started monitoring what we spent. Every year, I have a book down there at my pool, at our pool, that shows we have a balance of what I can spend, and every time I go to Sam's, or every time we buy chemicals for air and the products, I'm subtracting. I am keeping us within what I know I'm allowed to spend. In 2012, if you look at this spreadsheet that has the pool, that was the year we only had to take that $1,000 from the general fund, because that was the hot, crank, and summer. That was the summer that we saw 90 degrees almost every day. You've also noticed at the pool, we do everything we can. If it's not a hot day, I'm sending kids home. I'm sorry, guys, I know you want to get a job paid this summer, but we don't have it. We are cutting every area we can. We are bringing in swimming lessons, which is a revenue now for us. We are bringing in parties. We had our first community give back to the community day. I saw a few of you down there. Didn't see all of you, but I saw a few of you. Until you actually get down there to see a pool party in action, swimming lessons in action, you don't see what we're giving back to this community. I know we're taking out of the general fund, and I'm a taxpayer myself. But this is something that we need to keep in our area. Some of the ideas that I thought we could come up, just like Mr. Kitco said, our uniforms come out of the budget and employees need to pay for those. Um, we also talked about raising the cost of the concession. Do we want to go to a fast food concession? No, we have Domino's, we have the gist of what people bring in. We make money in our concession. We also talked about something that I was looking at. When school goes back into session, I suggest we close the pool then. Because then we're only keeping it open on the weekends, but we're keeping those chemicals in Monday, Sunday through Mon, Friday. So when school goes back, then we need to look at closing our school and not be open for Memorial Day, for Labor Day. That's something we need to look at too, because in those weeks, we are wasting money. And we only can open through the week ends, because the opening at four o'clock does not cut it. Nobody comes to the pool after four o'clock when school is back in. In August, when we start with all of our youth votes in the evenings, after Clark County Fair, we adjust our hours because people quit coming in the evenings. During the day, we also have looked at, I tracked these, I don't have any statistics. This is just things that we've tracked down. Monday through Friday, when we open at noon, noon to five is our busiest time. That's when we have our kids, our moms with the kids. Five o'clock, it's like the curtain is lifted and our parents leave. Because they go home and cook dinner for their spouses. They go home and do the parent activities they're supposed to be doing with their families. So that's another thing that we can look at. We can start cutting hours, maybe only be open from noon to six. And then, um, you know, at first I thought I was gonna come in and suggest only opening Monday through Friday in the summer, but there we sit again. We still have chemicals in our pool on Saturday and Sunday. I'm willing to look at a skeleton crew on Saturday and Sunday. Maybe have people on call and we bring in the one manager and a lifeguard. And then have two or three lifeguards on call if we need them. I'm, I'm willing to work with, with this. I know where we're at. I hear a lot of things, oh, your boiler's set at eighty. Set it down to seventy-five. If you think that's gonna save us money, set it down to seventy-five. It, it's great if we have a hot, crank and summer. But if we have a cool summer like we did this last summer, that boiler needed to be set at seventy-five to eighty to keep our people coming, what was there? Um, I don't know, I just, I've been racking my brains because this is a service to our kids. We have to keep this going for our kids. If we close the pool, what else is there for our children in this community to do? The skate park? That's great, but I can't see us all utilizing the skate park. Our kids need something to do. If we don't give them something to do in the summer, that's when we're gonna see vandalism occurring. We're gonna see a lot more happening on our streets. So, um, I don't know, I'm willing to work with you guys. We work hand in hand with everybody over here at this table. And, um, I can tell you, when I started in two thousand and twelve, I didn't worry about a budget. I was there, I had a job, I came, I did my service, I went home, I left. Now I'm here to speak for our kids, and this is to my heart, dear. So I do not want to see it closed and, you know, we're willing to do whatever we need to do to keep it. Thanks.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Yes, uh, wait, hold on a second. Hi.
Hi.
Um, okay, now, give me, give me some ideas, what you could do though. I mean, give me some really good ideas that you can make money on, you know, and, you know, and do it fairly quickly, because you didn't make enough gate sales and enough pool memberships to actually pay for the pool at all.
I agree with you there.
You know, so I ran a business for over five years, you know, and I definitely, you know, through the whole restaurant business. And it's not a pretty sight, you know, and I had to make a final decision to get rid of my beef. So what can you help us with really quick here?
You know, I don't know. I honestly don't know. The only thing I can think of right now is when we sell our season passes for buy a year, get a year half off, or buy a year, the first time we did it, we did buy a year, get a year free. Um, we sold a lot. And then if you notice, every other year, two thousand and eleven is when we did that. And then two thousand and thirteen is when we did it again. Um, you know, once again, it is a year to do that. But weather permitting is where this pool is. If we have a hot summer, we're gonna do great. If we have a cold summer, it's not gonna be so good. Um, I don't know, the only thing I could think of right off the top of my head is I would love to see more, um, pool rentals. I would love to see getting more community things involved where we open it up and have like our organizations come in and family picnics. I know, um, you know, Silver Lake used to do that and they're gone now. Um, we've had lots of inquiries about coming in. Um, there's an organization, it's sacred heart church, that comes in, they've been in twice. And I want to say it's the Knights of the Pithian. They've come in and they've had a big, huge picnic there. They pay to rent that. I, I don't know if we're gonna do a more of a, a rental outside of our community where we say, hey, look, we're one of the few pools that are left. They're willing to bring in community picnics and things. Um, you know, we balance things that. I don't know where to go. All that I know is I'm saving every penny I can at that pool. And we're cutting every spot that we can. But if it's not a hot summer, then we can't do anything.
You're a good manager, you know, because I saw your numbers and you worked with, I can tell the numbers. So you, your, your stat is really good. Thanks, John. Bill, I'd like to say so.
Um, you, you had some, some interesting ideas when you were, you were first talking. There's a whole bunch of things and it's a lot to digest. Could you possibly, if that's okay, write that out and send it to an email, at least to me? I don't know, I'm sure everyone else would like, would like it, but write out your ideas and let me know.
I have, um, Mr. Kitco's email. Can I email it to you and then you forward it under?
Yeah, that would be perfect. Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else? Yes, I'm sorry. Now, does, does a pool party, not, not a fundraiser pool party, when the pool holds a pool party, if it's warm weather, does it typically boost revenue for the day?
I would tell you, we have, um, Good Vibrations donates their service through a pool pass every year. We get three parties out of them. That's way more than, I mean, their services outweighs the cost of the pool pass by our means. Um, so we get the better of that deal. They come in, so we have a live DJ at this pool party. Um, and it's great. I mean, the kids know about it, we have adults there, and if you've never been to a pool party, you need to come because it's world to world people. Um, there's dancing on the deck, there's people dancing in the pool, it's promoting our activities. It's a nice thing. And yes, it brings in the revenue for that day. And actually, we've, I don't have my books with me right now, but when, when we have a pool party, we close it out. So we know exactly what we bring in for that pool party. And the last couple of years, me being the, the member country I am, we have not had a pool party in an evening that's been a public pool party where we've lost money. We've not had it. And like I said, if I get out there and the pool party is not big and I don't need all my lifeguards, they're going home. Because we are there to make money for the city. I do know I, I deal with people's money, not my money. What is my money? Because I'm a city person too. But I deal with the community's money, and I know that. So I'm not out there just spending it everywhere I can.
Thank you. Thank you, I'd like to say something.
I like having the pool open. I don't like having to pay fifty thousand under our current financial straight.
I understand.
I wanted to say that so that those people were actually paying attention. I'm not against the pool. I've just gotta find some business money someplace. We are going on the ballot for more money in May. If we get that, I'm confident that the discussion we've had concerning the pool tonight will have gone for naught, because I'm confident that my fellow council members will continue business as usual if we get the additional money.
My concern is this, is that I already have our lifeguards asking me about the pool situation.
Yeah.
They want to find other jobs in the summer. This last summer, I was stressing with lifeguards. And if we wait until we have it on the ballot, by then, our licenses are already due. Um, everything that we have to have this pool, we cannot wait until the second week of May to decide, okay, Val, here's your pool, let's go.
When do you start, when, when does actual preparation, the physical and?
Howie and I start talking in January.
In when?
January.
We start working on about, it's too cold out there now.
No, I know, I don't want to get snowed by now. But in April is when we actually, we have to get all of our flyers and everything ready to go. But we start spinning our wheels in January about what we see coming up.
So regardless of what happens in May, it makes no difference. We gotta open you now or close you now, right?
Well, and it's just, it's, our licenses are due.
Licenses are due in March, and most of the preparation starts to rain around April fourteenth is when the guys start going down and doing all the repairs. It takes that long by the time we paint and fill the pools. Yeah, we have about a month and a half of preparation before the pool opens. And most of our flyers, as I said, my policy would be is we send out about five thousand flyers, plus an article in the New Prodigal News, plus an article in the Springfield New Sun. So we do promote the pool, um, and that, and that big pool article where everyone sees about the local pools coming open. So, yeah, we're, it is out in North Western Schools and Tecumseh. So every elementary student, any of the?
Well, we even hit the middle school this last year. The middle school students, how we hit them is, they weren't able to last year, but they've already asked me, they've already been given the clear. They, sixth, seventh and eighth grade all want to come back to our pool and spend a sixth grade day, a seventh grade day and an eighth grade day, where we make money on them too. Um, it's just there, and they're already asking. They're trying to get that in their calendar too. So we need to decide. I'm not saying right now, but I'm just letting you know, May's too late. And I want to speak up for the kids. So that's, I mean, I'm here for that because it is a service for our kids.
Yes, thank you, Mo. Um, Val, everything you've said sounds good, but it all depends on what, whether.
Weather.
Okay. So you can have the biggest crowd maybe you've ever had, and if the sun goes away and get a couple of sprinkles, it's gone, right? I have a question. Might be the dumbest question ever asked. Howie, help me out here. I, I've been to a pool several times, okay? I don't know how much inside room that you can do anything with. Is there anything, and I mean absolutely anything, that would draw, we're talking probably what, eight percent of people there are kids, okay? To get the kids there, if it rains, to stay there, to have some activity, something, help, anything that they would want to be there even if it's raining and they cannot get in the water. Now, I'm not talking about lightning storms and tornadoes coming, but a cold day where it's chilly to get there, it's chilly. Something that would keep them there, that they would eat a candy bar, drink a pot, do whatever to stay there and have, um, I don't know, we have room to do anything like that. I think it's worth thinking about, you know? I don't, I don't know if it's feasible, but we gotta think of something. Anyone else for Val on pool? Thank you, Val.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Thank you very much. Appreciate your passion, believe it, you're what we do. Anyone have anything else to speak on up here at the moment? Citizens, anybody like to say anything else?
I'd like to say something on pool.
Would you go out up to the podium again, sir? You know, when they talked about the pool, the YMCA was gonna agree with them. In two years, the Y was gonna take it over. Previous council, about you people here, agreed to let the Y out of it because the Y wanted to buy the building, start the town. This pool hasn't made any money. We keep putting up money in the dead horse. I commend her efforts. But if it's not making any money, why do we want to keep putting money in something? We don't need that. Right now, you need to cut your losses here, close the pool down and move on. Because as we're saying, there are more taxpayers' money in something that ain't making it. Now, I try a lot here, but. Thank you, Zer.
Thank you for your comments.
Anyone else? Anyone out there, staff, anyone?
Have we come to a consensus on any of the cuts? I know you can't make a vote in a work session, but we gotta finalize the budget to bring to you, and it's gotta balance.
What do people tell us? Mr. Zandberg, what's his answer?
I, I believe from what I've heard.
Speak up if you would, sir.
From what I've heard, council say, I believe there more or less is a consensus on going to two deputies. That's the biggest chunk of money. We can't vote, but am I hearing right or am I thinking wrong?
I was keeping a stroke count as far as sharing or not sharing. I didn't get everybody's, but I got, uh, three to not share and two to share. Two of you, I don't have a response from as far as, I couldn't determine.
I'd, I'd have to go further and work out the mechanics on sharing before I said yes or no. I'd be willing to explore it, but I wouldn't be willing to commit to it at this point.
I'm with you on that, Dick. There were still too many unanswered questions. Well, what we have is we now have three deputies. If we had one of them that we shared, then we could keep three deputies still at this point, but one is shared. And so we'd actually have, we'd be paid for two and a half. But again, you're, you're willing to find out what, how it would work, is that correct?
Yeah.
Sharing it up.
And I'm confident that the sheriff, if we could work something out by March, by May, whatever, and it came to be that we could go another half deputy, I'm confident that the sheriff would be more than happy to throw another deputy at the two of us.
So you're saying go with two and possibly add the half of one if we can get it worked out? Is that, is that?
If we go with two, we're right away saving a hundred and eighty thousand dollars plus. If we go back for half a deputy, that drops that down to a hundred and forty, a hundred and forty-five thousand. But geez, that's, that's a large amount of money. And we do have an unknown fiscal situation coming up in May. Uh, good, bad, and we're gonna vote for it or we're gonna vote against it. But our income is in a substantial and significant state of flux. All we can count on is what we're getting now. If that's all we've got, we might want to back off of it. If we can work something out with us on a half a deputy, I don't have a problem. Let's see where we go. But right now, I'd say we go down to either two or none, and it's kind of scary to go to none all at once. I'd say we go, my opinion is we go to two now and we see on details with that how the half deputy putting it back. That's what I think.
Thank you. Mo?
Yes.
Yeah. Opinion, two deputies. And one thing that really stuck in my mind that Sheriff Kelly kind of stressed, and he stressed it real hard. He said, if you go to two deputies, don't worry, you're still gonna be protected. He said, the calls are in the county, I'm gonna be protected, protected. Let's go with two, worry about the third one, that we can take full time, not part time. His words were, you will be protected. There are deputies in the county who will be here. They may not be here because the cats now are waking you up, but if it's serious, they will be here. I'm all for two. He said that, I didn't. He said, we will be protected. And we, as far as the third deputy is concerned, let's face it, the sheriff does not want to lay off a deputy anywhere. He's looking out for the best interest of his people, which is exactly what he should do. He should try to bodyguard that deputy rather than laying him off somewhere. And I don't have a problem with that. But I think we're gonna be fine with two. I don't think we're gonna be fine. I'd much rather have four, I'd really like to have six or eight. But he said, we will be protected with.
And I think he also said they would not be laid off. They would be absorbed back into the cap, into the county.
Well, he said, but I'm, he was talking about either two, I didn't know about the third one, but yes, you're right. John, who would get an opinion for you? Yeah, real quick, um, we need to hold us up because we're, we're gonna do this. Okay, we, we had two deputies at one time. And Barry Kilburn was on council. He made a statement, he, he suggested, uh, you know, about crime before, crime after. He said, there's no difference from four to two. I think we had six and we went down to two or something. So, you know, does that make any sense to you?
Are you saying cut to two? Thank you.
No, that's, that's all.
No, we're not voting, I'm just.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Mike, you have an opinion?
Uh, my opinion was, and I kind of quickly just tracked back, we asked this lady, that money was earmarked for police, money that was left over was to be used for street.
Exactly.
It wasn't to be used for streets also, if there was money left over, it would be used for streets, which wasn't a lot, because, you know, police.
That was so we didn't spend it someplace else, that we're just saving.
Well, we, we placed closure or, you know, you know, whatever it may be. So, uh, my opinion is that's what we asked for. I, my opinion would go down to two and stress that we bring two down in May.
Mr. McIntyre?
Um, well, based on the two questions I asked the sheriff, uh, the response that I got, I'm not completely sold on it. I realize that, um, if you, we would still get protection if someone was breaking into a house, whatever it is, we could call somebody up at the same time. It's gonna be in the newspapers that we're cutting down deputies. And if I'm the bad guy, I'm gonna go to where there's gonna be fewer police cars coming down the streets. And I, I don't feel, um, I'm not happy about that decision about, about making New Coral Island a potentially less safer place, not that it would be, but the potential's there, and it's, it's not something that I'm sitting easy with, and so I'd, I'd have to say I'm not in favor of that, but I, I understand the rationale, what everyone else is saying, and that they're all valid points too.
Keep in mind, it would be two deputies for six thousand employees, or citizens, where Davenport Township is getting by with one for over twenty thousand, so, you know, if you're looking for a target for crime, statistically, we have better coverage.
No, I, I do understand that, yeah, I, I do understand, so.
Hey, Mr. Zambach, I think you ought to give an opinion, Mr. Williams.
Uh, what we're doing, by the way, like, having a forum, like, we can't be asked how we're gonna vote, or however.
No, we're just, we're giving an opinion.
It is, like, this is a forum, we're discussing what we want to do, and this is a vote, and it is.
I'm asking you to give me some direction, because this doesn't.
Could you let the passage come from an actual council meeting, our work session? This is in the Sunshine laws, and so I'm not going to give you my opinion. I would gladly give you it on council on Monday, Facebook.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor? Yes, I'm, I'm, uh, just giving an opinion again. The opinion would be that I would like to see the half, whatever we're doing here. Uh, two deputies, I'm, I'm gonna have to cut, we need to cut at least a couple thousand, or a couple hundred thousand dollars. So, we keep getting cut and cut and cut, from the state keeps cutting our money, Davenport Township has the same problem, all counties have the same problem. When you don't have the money to be able to pay for the people that you need to be able to furnish the different ideas that we have for the city, for police protection, whatever it may be, we need to have this passed, and I'm looking that it passes in May, it's gonna be on the ballot, so we'll find out at that point. That's what I'm saying. So, what we need to do, I guess, is actually, at our next council meeting, we'll have to